Okay, shall we get started?
Yes.
Soon as we get started, soon we can go. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the MBTA Task Force to order on November 9th at 6:30 PM. Start the roll call and see if I can do this without screwing up names.
Yeah, threw down the challenge today this morning, right?
So, Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Sandy Barber Turner?
Yes.
Sue Filbrick?
Yes.
Edie Paul?
Yep.
Richard Smith?
Yes.
Sarah Vellish?
Yes.
And Michael Pratt?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you present?
I'm here also.
Are you?
Can't remember my name, but here I am. Okay, first order of business is acknowledgement of correspondence. And we have letters from Ms. Avani, Mary Foley, and from Donna First. And I would like to discuss how we respond to these letters because some of them, I think they all have really interesting questions that deserve responses. And I don't know whether we should be answering each one as it comes in or trying to group the questions together and answer them in one category to everybody at once.
Yeah, I have a suggestion on that. With the 40B, we had probably 300 emails. And what we did, or letters, we put them up on the website and then didn't respond to them individually because there was no way we could, but then took the comments into consideration when we were holding meetings. So they're kind of trying to say, okay, if people had questions, how can we respond to those verbally within the meetings?
I like that idea a lot. When you look at many of the letters, they're not really asking many questions. They're telling us things. They're giving us their opinions, and that's great. But they're really asking very few questions that, you know, need an immediate response from us, in my view. But I think we acknowledge to them that we've received their letter. We're gonna share it with the task force, and we'll post it on the website. And it would be great, we could tell them when our next forum is. If we haven't set a new date yet, we'll say, we hope you'll come to the next forum. And they can check the website for the date.
And I think it's crucial that we have Q and As up on the website.
Right.
Yes.
So that, I mean, with the 40B, we were lucky because we had so much up on the website. We didn't get people coming to us asking for information. They knew to go to the website, and everything was there. So I think it's important that the task force has everything there on the website.
Yeah, and actually, everything is posted so far, all the correspondence and so forth.
Can I say, because the Donna First one had like a back and forth, right?
Yeah, I turned it over.
And so, so I saw TF, I assumed TF means task force. But who, so?
So, so this letter came in, and I thought one way we might handle this. And this is a draft that I just put together.
Okay.
So you have not sent?
I haven't sent anything out, no. I wouldn't do that without having the whole task force approval, so.
My reaction is right along the lines of Sarah and Susan. I can't see us spending a lot of time going through these questions and coming, you know, we're gonna get into 15 discussions just on the basis of the letter. And post them. There's, they've got ample opportunity at the forums, and we can remind them of that. In fact, it might be a good idea to answer these letters with a simple formula that says, thank you, we're gonna post it, and we welcome you to our next forum, and we shall have a chance to.
So why don't I get Gail to do that? When she gets a letter, she'll respond.
Yep. I would also say, though, that to the extent there is a question that is not answered somewhere, that I think Tiffany is keeping a list of questions. And we just need to make sure that the questions that come up are answered and their answers are available.
And that they're on the website.
Yeah.
Clearly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess the only question I have was that with regard to Donna First's thing, that was a communication between her and myself. And I wanna make sure that she was okay with posting it, since it doesn't, wasn't addressed to the task force.
Ah. It was addressed to you in your capacity as a member of the task force.
I, yes.
So I think that makes it a public document.
Okay. Okay. I'm just sensitive to it if it was.
I, I, we remove, generally remove email addresses, phone numbers, anything like that that's in a letter that comes in. But anyone who addresses a public official in that capacity, in his capacity as a public official, has made a.
Okay.
And, and.
A public.
I assure you that Donna is perfectly aware of that.
Okay.
Well, she also copied me on it, so.
Oh, well, there you go.
Okay, then I'm not, then I'm off the hook, fine.
Okay, well, that's great, that's very helpful, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is updated schedule. So the most important thing on the schedule, I think, is a week from today. 10 o'clock in the morning is the kickoff meeting with the consultant. It will be a Zoom meeting. Those who can't attend in person can certainly beam in and pick up the recording if they can't make that either. And one of the things I'd, like you actually said, Sandy, I got your note. Anybody who has questions for her, you can send them to me, and I'll compile them and then send them to her in advance of the meeting next week, so she will come prepared. Gar's not here today, you think?
No, he was here this morning.
Yeah.
Maybe, is he online, is he?
Oh, no. There's nobody online.
He, he must have had enough.
No, he's only human.
Yeah, no, there's nobody on, so.
Can I clarify that there?
Here he is.
Here he is.
There will be a meeting here.
And he will appear.
So, we got hybrid end of the meeting here.
It's all gonna be Zoom, oh, it'll be both, it'll be a hybrid meeting.
Okay, so, some people will be here.
Some, oh, yes, yeah.
I won't be alone in this room.
No, no, I'm gonna be here. Emily will be here, and her team.
I plan to be here.
Yeah.
I'll be here.
Yeah, me too. I mean, I think she's gonna meet the whole crew.
Yeah, I think it'll be good for her to get as much FaceTime as she can.
To Gar's suggestion, have we compared a booklet of information for her?
So that's what I wanted to do, including questions that we want, or specific things we want her to address.
Yeah.
So Sandy gave me a list, which is very helpful. If others get to me tonight or tomorrow, I'll send it over. Promise to get it to her tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
Yours is a very comprehensive list, I think.
Richard was gonna send some of the scenarios, right?
Yeah, and you maybe already have.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna leave off the G100.
Yeah, that's fine, yes.
Just to.
Yeah, not to confuse it, yeah. That was just more informational.
Right.
Curiosity, I should say.
And the other not-quite-so-important thing is we're gonna have a walkabout downtown on November 18th, was it permitting? And anyone can come who'd like to. It's just, what we're gonna do is walk down Morse Court and look at Powder House, and then down Union Street and into 10 and 12 Summer Street, pass by Gar's place.
Be infamous, so everyone's.
We can't do it totally without seeing that. The idea is to try to demonstrate areas of higher density in downtown, where it exists.
And possibly end at a location Tiffany is looking into working out somewhere like Dunkin' Donuts or the Flying Gaul.
Laughing Gaul.
Laughing Gaul. Sorry if you're listening, Laughing Gaul. To maybe end and have some coffee.
Oh, that's a nice idea, that's a really nice idea.
And this starts at 10?
Yes.
Yeah, 10 on Saturday morning, yeah. Yeah, that's it for the schedule for now. We'll be updating the schedule and sending it out as we move along here.
There's one other thing on the schedule, actually, there's supposed to be a communications subgroup meeting on the same day as the meeting with Emily.
No, I think it's, we put it on the 30th.
We did.
Yes, we did.
Okay, great.
Okay, I'll put that down, November 30th. Outreach committee.
That's great.
And I think we set it for a different time.
11, did we say?
I think it was 11, yeah. Because I just did the draft minutes today, I'm pretty sure it was 11.
All right, that's great. You're ahead of me on that.
Well, they're spotty. I just happened to do those.
So the one on the 16th is gone?
Yes.
Yeah, we have enough meetings as it is.
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is subcommittee reports. We'll start off with the zoning committee because we're caught off the presses, Sarah.
Yes, so I made up the summary. We've identified three or four possible areas downtown. We had many more, you know, we brainstormed, and we eliminated some because they didn't make sense. And so, the four, I think we're still considering, though, the fourth one we may not be. One is Elm Street, Morse Court, Powder House, Lower Pine, and Sawmill Circle. Another is Harbor Point, Summer Street, Beach Street, and behind Town Hall, though we feel Harbor Point may be problematic because of its size. Another, I think, is the Summer Street, Brook Street Cricket Building area. And then finally, we looked at Desmond, Summer, and Brook, and I don't think we're all aligned with that one, so that one easily may come off the list. But each one is around nine acres. So we have the opportunity to whittle them down or only include two of them to get to the 15.6 acres. Richard has been fantastic, and he has created models in the compliance system. And so, we've been using various parameters to determine the impact. We're assuming three stories. And we've been, so far, we've been looking at the existing general district setbacks, so five foot in the front and 10 feet on either side in the back. We've identified an area in the LCD of over 20 acres, but we haven't done any modeling on that because we kind of feel that's not as complex as the downtown area. We've talked about a possible multi-use district on Beach Street and maybe part of Summer Street, you know, like towards the dry cleaners. It's complicated. A separate district doesn't count the land included in the district, but you can use the residential units to offset a portion of what the others required within the half-mile radius to reduce the density. The interesting thing is, if an existing lot is too small for a three-family unit based on our parameters, you can't count any of the existing buildings. So if it's a single-family or a two-family resident, and we've said it's a minimum lot size of 6,000, that's not gonna be included in the count of units or density. And we're juggling the land, you know, we're just trying lots of examples. The other thing is, if you include excluded land, it decreases the density. So one of the things we've been trying to do is to eliminate excluded land from the areas. And we seem to have enough acreage that it's not a big issue. There's still many open questions. One of the questions is, is can we offset a lower density within the half-mile radius for a higher density outside of the half-mile, like in the LCD?
The averaging, sort of.
Yeah. Does that cross the half-mile radius, or is it within the half-mile radius versus outside that? The other thing is, does the number of parking spaces impact the density model? It seems like on first blush that it may be they're assuming the parking's gonna be in setbacks. So that it seems like if we increase the parking requirement, that doesn't adversely impact the density, but that's, again, an open question. There's still an open question of how many units do you wanna allow in a larger parcel? And what controls can we implement to, you know, help that? Another is, how do we incorporate affordable housing on small lots? Or do we limit it to lots of capacity of greater than five, which would give you one unit if it's 20%? We haven't talked much about that. And then finally, I think probably the biggest challenge, and we're not always in total agreement on this, is how do we protect the existing ambiance and avoid a lot of tear downs and rebuilds and protect as much of the existing as possible? And I think that's having to play with the model and figure out what you can do with it. If you're gonna have a small lot that isn't, isn't gonna be able to hold three units, then if you have a lot size that's large enough, that's not gonna be included anyway, so they wouldn't be able to build on it, so, you know. But we have a lot of work to do, and we're hoping the consultant can help us with our open questions and take a look at what we've done to kind of see if we're way out of whack or not. I don't think we are, because I think Richard's done a really good job.
You know, one of the, one of the questions that comes to my mind is, I look at the compliance model, is that in the compliance model, you have, you know, 16 things you can choose to define what's gonna happen. Well, zoning laws can be, as we all know, a lot more complicated than that, so they're gonna have to give us some kind of a feel about what we're gonna be able to get away with in terms of the flexibility we take on our own language and how it confines to that, to that formulaic approach that the state takes.
Okay, very good. The outreach, very outreach committee?
We have been doing outreach.
I had another forum.
Yeah, we had another forum on last night, last night.
Yeah, yeah. It was 20 virtual attendees, 20 virtual.
And it went very well. Chris kicked it off with a great statement, sort of just the facts again, and there was some good back and forth questions. Anne provided great questions to get discussions going a little, but that was very much appreciated. And I don't, other than our meetings, I don't think we've had any other public events.
Well, we had the lunch at the, with the Council of Aging.
Oh, that's right, you and I went and spoke at the Council of Aging. There were maybe 30 or 40 people there.
It was actually bigger.
Some good, good discussion.
There was really good questions.
What kinds of things were concerning you?
Well, there was talk about downsizing for seniors and the availability, whether local preference was talked about, or a couple of topics like that.
Affordability.
Affordability.
And not wanting it to look like Rantoul Street.
Poor Rantoul Street. Poor Rantoul Street is great.
A common theme, I think.
Okay.
And our next meeting is November 30th. And at that point, we're going to start thinking about what kind of outreach should be included in our next phase and how we should incorporate the consultant with that. Do we sort of get her out front and center? And I'll step back a little, but we'll be talking about that, as well as we've been invited to speak in January at.
Manchester Club.
Manchester Club, and how that will work.
Are they gonna let you in?
Probably not.
Aw, come on. Oh, and there'll also be a table or a.
Oh, yes, a town meeting, thank you. Yes, do you wanna talk about that?
Well, I mean, there'll be a pile of FAQs. I don't know, and we should talk to Tiffany about this, if she also wants to do a table the way she did at the Boosters Carnival, which was pretty helpful. A lot of people came by, it was an informal kind of thing, like the first forum.
I think we're not going to do that because the agenda for the meeting is so packed.
Oh, okay.
That really, it's just a pick-up-a-handout, we're here, you know.
Yeah, I don't think we wanna clog it.
Yeah.
Well, I received an email about not clogging the lobby, yes.
No lobby clogging, yes.
Boy, okay.
And we should all show up at 5:30 to help process the registration process.
Just, just a thought about whether we should use the, right, consultant as a spokesperson. We're paying for her hours.
Right.
And I think the town would take it better, take the information better coming from us, people they know.
Right.
So we'll continue to be up, that's a good point, Anne, a really good point. I don't think of that, I'm glad that you bring these things up.
So how many hours do we have with the consultant? It depends on which part of the consulting firm we're using. Some parts are more expensive, but I suspect that the figurehead is the most expensive.
Actually, she's not, it's the partners.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're quite a bit more expensive.
Is the traffic study or the.
Economic feasibility study.
Right.
People, yes. Yes, yeah.
Better to use them to do things we cannot do.
That's right.
We might look at whether there's some part of the Christmas by the Sea where, I'm not sure that I wanna do MBTA zoning in Christmas at the same time, but that's going to be.
Not all time, no.
That's gonna be a big, well, at least the chamber says that's gonna be a big thing this year.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
We'll think about that.
Yeah, we can talk about it at the 30th.
Yeah.
Maybe waiting to see what the weather's gonna be like.
Who's zoning long for Christmas?
Yeah.
What do you want to do?
Pick a building you wanna save. A piece of coal.
You can have a sort of little, with the dresses in it, yeah.
Are you interested in us changing the zoning for your property? Like that person in Carlisle.
Okay, moving on. So the next thing I'd like to do is go through the questions. We're not supposed to answer these yet, I don't think, but I just wanted to sort of thank everybody's temperature a little bit as to how we think about these things. And there are no particular order, but we're just gonna go through them one at a time. So the first one was, do we create a single district or several districts?
I think the answer to that one's pretty clear.
Several, several, yeah.
Maybe even many. Yeah.
And the second one's related to that, do we focus on the general district or consider a different area, including residential districts?
I think in the zoning subcommittee, we've been trending towards the general district just because those are areas with higher density.
And lower setbacks and lower.
Lower setbacks. And, you know, for instance, on the Elm Street section, we're including Sawmill Circle. And that's a new enough development and dense enough that you wouldn't think somebody would come in and tear it down.
Right.
And rebuild. Plus, like, the Lower Pine Street condos. So the extent to which we can include that sort of area.
Although, it's fair to say, we feel like the LCD is an option that we have.
Oh, for outside the half-mile radius, oh, yes.
I have, I have regrets that we're doing everything unentirely on the inner circle. I think we're missing kind of the point of the law if there is one. I also think we may well be able to, to get to Sarah's point earlier, we may well lessen considerably the impact on the general district and the downtown by using higher density outside. So that's another way of thinking about that same forestry that changes at some point.
I mean, if we could get it down to density of 10, right?
Well, it's, I think, I think it's complicated because you're not just changing the dens, you can keep the density the same under the new zoning law, and yet still very much change the dynamics of redevelopment because you've, you've put places, you've changed what it, you've changed the difficulty of replacing a building because the old laws are gone.
I mean, I think a fair answer might be that what we've been thinking about and giving our attention to for the moment is the general district, but really, it's a multivariate equation. And looking outside the district has benefits as well.
Isn't it the case that half, half the district has to be contiguous? Half the acreage has to be contiguous?
Yes.
No, half, half the acreage has to be in the half-circle.
No, no, half the acreage has to be contiguous.
And be contiguous.
The, the large contiguous could be outside.
What you said is true, but it also has, there's also another requirement.
50% contiguous.
The acreage has to be contiguous.
Which we could do in the LCD based on that. A site we found that was like 22, 23 acres.
Yeah.
That would be half.
But I think one of the real questions that we don't have an answer to is if we could do a higher density in the.
Right.
And a lower density. Because, I mean, I think to Richard's point, we wanna maintain the character of the town.
Right, yeah.
First and foremost. And if we can minimize the, the, the potential damage in the historic district in the downtown area, that would be, that'd be a win.
Right.
So I'm just trying to understand, so there's a potential where there's a section on the LCD that we could designate?
Yeah, we kind of looked at the medical building, and then back, maybe the Brady site on Beaver Dam Road, but going back up and maybe including the MAC. And that area is like 23 acres.
So keeping it rough, you could have half of the total required there, and then the other half.
Be scattered around the downtown.
Yeah.
Has to be within the.
Yeah, and the question is, is can the density in that LCD be more than 15 units per acre?
So that you average out.
Exactly.
Lower. Yeah.
Right.
And we don't know that answer.
We don't know.
It appears from the office hours that that's the case, but I think it really needs to get confirmed.
Because Anne.
You have to, you have to average out at 15.
15 per acre.
So if you went 20 and 10.
20 out there, we could do 10.
And looking at another town's plan.
We're gonna find out from Emily, but there's clearly a subjective element to this.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so, you know, probably if you did, you know, 30 and 5 would work.
It's math, right? At the end of the day.
Would be 30 and 5, be 30 and 0.
There you go.
That's not gonna work.
Okay, let's just see, I like that idea. Okay, the next thing is, is it best to tinker with existing regulations in districts, or do you create an overlay district with its own regulations? And I have a feeling it's gonna be a little bit of both. And the reason I say that is, although I know overlay district is the way we're probably gonna go, but there are some pieces to this that we're gonna wanna just change of the way the town does business, like demolition delay to protect some of these buildings, and maybe some design review and things to protect the character.
Yeah, I think a huge point, part we haven't looked at and we need to look at is design standards. And I think that could do a lot for us in the downtown area.
Yeah.
You know, we've never had design standards as. I'm not sure that either of those is really part of the zoning. Yes, they're. It would be part of the overlay district, I think, that you're allowed to put in design.
Oh, you are, yeah.
They've explicitly stated that.
Yes, yes.
They said, they said.
Okay, the, the question is, do we tinker with existing regulations, or do we create an overlay? And it sounds as if those things all go into an overlay. I think so.
I think this question is something you defer until you have some district picked out and figure out what you're trying to do.
Figure out what we need to, how we make them conform.
Okay, do we wanna, oh, we've already answered that, going beyond the one-half mile radius.
Yes, we wanna consider it. As much as we can.
And we've answered this next one, too. Should the density requirement be focused on the downtown, or should it be more equitably shared with underlying residential districts?
We might.
Yes, LCD isn't a red here.
Well, the LCD isn't exactly a residential district, is it?
But we might wanna talk a little bit about the thought process that got us. But we might want to talk a little bit about the thought process that got us there. Because if you think about spreading it out in all the different districts compared to the general district, I mean, to us, the pros and cons are obvious, but maybe not to everyone else.
I think a better way to think about it is that what we said in our meeting earlier this morning, which is that our first problem is to meet the requirements and our second problem is to retain the character and quality of the town. And if that's our focus, that's more important than what particular district we choose.
And if you look at downtown, certainly the half mile radius, the majority is general district.
Right.
No, that's not correct.
Half, half is general district.
Okay, half.
Not even half.
Half is District E, actually, which is.
Yeah, it's not even half. It's, the general district is a relatively small part of the.
Well, it's 50 acres.
Yeah.
It's 50 acres.
What's in the circle, I think, is 300.
Yeah, and I know that a lot is excluded land.
That's right. Yes, that's right. But, okay, well, whatever.
Sorry, sorry to be contradictory.
I wonder if this is a good question now. How can we change our zoning bylaw to allow by right when it's currently nonconforming? For multi, nonconforming, multifamily properties, so that their units can be counted.
That's, I think that's what we're trying to look at in the model, is trying to figure that out.
How we keep what we've got.
So I think one of the, I think one of the problems is if we were to allow GARR's property by right, that would suddenly allow every building in the downtown to have seven units.
Yeah, that's why I made that crack earlier about the fact that he's nonconforming now and he'll probably be nonconforming after.
I had hoped, I had hoped that the model would let us grandfather in the existing units, but from what I've seen so far, it doesn't seem like there's that capability.
Yeah, it lets us grandfather them in from the point of view that they're obviously still legal.
Right.
But unless we find out something we, that would be very surprising to me, Emily, it doesn't matter what's there. I mean, that's the thing that you have to keep coming back. It does not matter what is currently there for these computations.
So GARR can rebuild, but it's going to be a special permit.
Right.
Yep.
But the point is that if you were to zone that area, for example, to have the density of GARR's building.
Yeah, we've got a problem.
Oh, you got a huge problem.
Particularly since we can't zone just his building. We have to have a five acre.
We'd like to zone just his building.
Zone it out.
I think we still could, and I hope we will, pose the question to Emily.
Yes.
How can we somehow get credit for the fact that in the development over a century of this downtown, their historical properties have been created, which happen to be inconformant or in the same spirit as this law? And is there a way for the state to recognize that as opposed to, you know, saying, sorry, it's just not there?
It's a really good point. I don't think the answer is going to be yes, but maybe it'll have some effect on the subjective side. A good example is, there's a two-family house behind me which has a parcel density of like 30, and it won't count for anything.
Right.
Which is crazy.
So I looked at the MIT presentation this afternoon, which is really interesting in light of this.
Because you don't have enough to do.
But they made a statement which I thought was interesting, which is existing density in the downtown is 12 units an acre, which I can't believe that's true.
That is not correct. I know it's not correct.
So I wrote a note to Minerva and asked her to see if she could.
Double check.
So how far off is that number?
Well, I got it by street and I, it also depends on what you mean by downtown. I mean, that's a really, that's a really funky number because, you know, are you including Harbor Point? In which case the density just.
No, fair enough, but I'm just saying that their number's.
It's around eight.
It's around eight.
Again, it depends on what you take. Most of the streets, if you look at them, are between 8 and 11.
To GARR's point though, I think it's important to bring that up.
Yes.
And because what we're learning from Richard's work on the compliance model is that there's a fair amount of subjectivity in the whole process. And if you don't ask, you don't get it, so.
Absolutely.
All right, the next question is a little inflammatory, but I'm going to throw it out there. Should we consider a minimum threshold, threshold compliance solution? And then add language to allow potential developments with special permit, which might be a greater benefit to the town?
I don't see why we would want to do anything more than the minimum.
That's my feeling.
Absolutely. That sounds like a.
What would be the greater benefit? I guess that would be, as an example.
Well, let's say somebody came in with a proposal to build something out of the parking lot here and would include a senior center at no cost to the town.
But they can do that today. There's nothing in this, this.
Well, no, there'd be like a senior housing complex with 50 units.
Well, that would be before the planning board.
Well, we couldn't, we couldn't.
Well, how did they approve the Harbor Point?
That's a very good ques, no, this would be a residential build, multifamily building.
Right. But, I mean, the Harbor Point, I don't see that's anywhere in our bylaw.
Well, it's a commercial building, isn't it, or what?
No, not with that number of units. I don't think so. What?
Without high.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, I wasn't here.
I wasn't either, but I think that.
Isn't that high?
What?
Okay, we're talking about the 40 Beach Street?
Yeah.
Okay, it's two and a half stories.
Yeah, it's two and a half stories.
Because I lived, I worked in, on the third floor and I banged my head every time I turned around.
It is, it is.
Do you ever remember? But how did that get approved?
Must have been a special permit.
I'm sure it was a special.
With the planning board, I would think.
It was a big project because it was flooded and it had to be filled.
Yeah. So I'm saying, planning board could approve a project in that town parking lot, I think.
It could, but not a residential building.
Why?
Because we don't allow multifamily.
General district. That's general district.
We don't allow multifamily in general district.
Three families, multifamily.
Well, this would be 50 family.
Okay.
Okay, but back to the question, Anne. I certainly personally would not be in favor of anything to go with what we have to by just to comply. Like, that seems crazy. Let's not look for trouble.
Right.
We're getting strong out by the state. I don't see why we'd do more than what we have to.
I also feel like the residents of the town, that's their expectation, that we do the job we're given, not go past it.
Right.
How about a density bonus for increased affordability?
A density bonus.
Right, so if somebody builds in the overlay district.
A specific project.
Yeah.
As part of this?
Well, we're talking about affordability as part of this, right?
Yeah, we're going to require at least 10% and probably 20%.
Right, and some of the citizen comments has surely been very vocal about wanting affordability.
But we can, we can require affordability and yet within the scope of the, whatever, the current number of units and density, right?
Right.
We don't need to.
No, what I could say is, so let's say you had a 10-unit project, we could require two of them be affordable. And what if they were under a special permit? We could say, well, do four more and give us them all would be affordable, so we get.
I don't think we want to do that.
I just, I think this may be a little further down the pipe.
Okay.
And one of, one of the concerns I have is that to raise the number of affordable units beyond 10, we have to, it has to be economically feasible.
Sure.
And that has not yet been proven.
Right.
And I think that will have a, in order for it to be economically feasible, to make 20% of the development affordable, I think that raises the cost for the other units a lot. So.
Right.
I could also tell you that in today's world, with the interest rates where they are and we're building costs where they are, even getting 10% and making a project work, it's going to be, it's going to be hard. 20% today, that'll change. But today, requiring 20%, I don't think you, I don't think you, I suppose you can find somebody who will tell you it's economically feasible, but I'm telling you that it's more likely not.
That's for sure. At 20% today with today's costs.
Right.
But this is a determination that gets made by our consultants firm, not.
Right. Well, you have to provide that as, as, as part of the submission to the executive office.
You know, I think we're zoning for a long time. When did these zoning laws, I mean, when did the bones of the zoning laws we have now come in?
1945.
1945.
Yeah, we've been zoning for a long time.
For a long time. We've got an enormous task to try and look ahead and figure out what the unexpected consequences of what we're doing are. And the last thing we should be doing is leave loopholes for even more things that we cannot really predict accurately to happen. That's my.
I agree.
Okay, I think we know the answer to this. Somebody will put it out there because it's been on hit the list. Do we try to address the mandate by allowing just three family properties? Or should we propose zoning changes that allow larger developments on larger parcels?
It's not, it's not an issue because you can't do it with three families.
Yeah, I think that the compliance model is going to kind of lead us down the road as to what we need to do.
Well, what I said is really not true though, because we don't know what the density in circle has to be.
Right.
So is the density in this, we could come back to this. You're right.
Sarah's point is right. The model is going to lead us down a.
Okay, should we try to protect existing commercial and retail uses by requiring mixed-use properties with commercial space on the ground level?
Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
Where it works.
Yeah, I think we kind of looked at the beach street area and saying. And up summer to the dry cleaner, is that a reasonable mixed-use area? Because that doesn't include in our acreage for the 15.6 acres. But it gives us a credit.
Right.
That helps with the density.
With the density.
And I don't want somebody to tear down Crosby's and put up.
Yeah, exactly, condos.
I think the answer to that is yes, pretty simple.
We've got to try to figure out how we can do it.
Yes.
Yes.
Is that all floodplain?
No, I don't think Crosby's is not, but.
Harbor Point has pieces.
It's not, in the model where they identify an exclusionary zone, which I, pretty much follows, I think, the theme of floodplain. And it hits the end of Tappan, in the back of Tappan, but doesn't touch the rest of that parcel.
Because they used to take barges up there with grain in them.
That's interesting.
Is that right?
That's interesting.
Considering all that is tidal filled land.
Yeah, well, that's another question. So under our current zoning, I think it requires a Chapter 91 permit, which includes filled tideland, requires a special permit by the planning board.
But we have, we have filled tideland in town that predates Chapter 91.
Wow. But I think we want to eliminate that existing special permit requirement.
Right.
Within the MBTA district.
Yeah, within the, yeah. Yeah. It's just going to limit the area we can count.
I think we know the answer to this one. Do we want to propose design guidelines?
Yes.
So, what is that, Richard working on it?
Richard not working on it, but he's about to.
It's on the list. He's cranking out models at request. I haven't given him all my changes yet.
So this next one's interesting. Mitchell has something to say about this too. How do we coordinate the MBTA zoning with historic districts?
Yes.
Or do we avoid the historic district?
I think I already expressed my personal preference, which is we just avoid it. Because you don't gain much. It's such a tiny piece of land. There may be some place where we are stuck with contiguous problems where we, where we have to, but I haven't seen them. So I don't see much reason to go after it.
I think it depends on where the historic district is. Is Morse Court, Morse Court and District, oh, okay, good, okay. Because we've tried to avoid the houses along Central.
It's pretty much the spine from Washington to.
Bridge.
Is there any benefit to the historic district that might come from this?
Carrying down buildings and building multifamily housing?
No.
I don't, can't imagine.
Okay. Well, if demolition delay is part of the picture, that would certainly.
Demolition delay, it doesn't have anything to do with MBTA zoning. And it would be a townwide, under some, you know, probably be townwide with some condition related to what the structure is. I think that's a.
I mean, I think that originally we were talking about including some of the historic district on Central Street because it had multifamily units. But once we found out that you can't include the number of existing units, you don't gain anything by that. So why not leave it out?
Please leave it out.
Well, another answer to this might be, do we require a site plan review by the planning board for any project?
No. Maybe you could over a certain size.
I think this is a, my suggestion is this is an honest question because I would say yes if it didn't get in the way of approval by the state. But that sounds like a red flag question to you.
Right, no, actually, the state says you could do.
Is it as of right if you have to have site plan?
You could do a site plan review, but you can't impose unreasonable conditions.
It can't be too subjective and tested.
But I can't believe they would allow a site plan review on a small lot with a three family. That's different than a bigger.
Well, it may be some reason why we avoid the smaller.
Right, you might want to size, you know, if it's over a certain number of units.
Something over 10 units or.
Yeah.
But that's a question for an expert in that.
Yeah, to the degree it's allowed, it seems a good idea to me.
Why would you give it up?
Yeah, right.
This is a nice question. It's going to be, should we consider form-based zoning, which can create specific design guidelines for individual properties?
That seems like a larger question than we can handle between now and December of next year.
It might be, but we might be able to pick a few parcels that we think are important. For example, the Richdale, if we're going to include that in the district and say, we want parking in the back and no more than three stories and.
It doesn't fit in the model, does it?
Form-based zoning.
Well, that, that along with the guidelines themselves are going to be part of the subjective review by the state. Because they allow guidelines, but obviously they don't go in the model. So obviously you could make guidelines that were just totally restrictive, so. I think we just have to expect that they're going to look at what we do and figure out.
Somebody said if the design guideline's saying we have to use gold siding on every building, that's not a problem.
Yeah. I just think going to form-based is just adding more complications that I'm not sure it's worth it.
Let's get some, let's get some, some help, some architects looking at other people's things and see what comes up and then we know.
The town has not got much appetite for zoning changes.
Oh, you're kidding?
Really?
Why would you say that?
And I think, I think that trying to introduce a new, a new model is a problem.
I think that's a very good point.
That's a very good point.
Do we want to establish a list of historic or other significant structures in these districts that we wish to protect?
There is an effort going on in the Historic District Commission. We've hired a consultant and we're undertaking a survey of properties in the town. That's kind of the easy part. But, you know, I don't see how that's part of this scope. I'd like to, I mean, I'd, but.
I guess that'd be part of form-based zoning, wouldn't it, to say, these buildings have to be saved no matter what. If you had it on to a renovator, but they can't be replaced.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
It'd be nice to know what the historic significant buildings are.
Yeah, well, there are some avenues that we can pursue after that, but there is a, there is a state, there's a state, I'm not as up on it as I should be, but there's a state requirement for the way in which you put together this survey of the buildings in order to designate some buildings as significant.
I mean, in my opinion, the answer to the question is yes, but the follow-up question is how do you then determine that list?
Well, the historic commission is working on it.
You hire a consultant and you pay him a lot of money. And they look through all the records and decide what's significant. And they do, there's a lot of it's just by age, but they'll do age and they'll just do the classification of the architecture.
So someone.
Pretty sure Richdale's won't show up on that.
So someone is working on this list or no? You're saying theoretically that could be done?
We are working on it.
There is a question we skipped, number 14. We talked about site plan review by the planning board.
Do we want to have the planning board or the historic commission? Well, do we want to have the planning board or the historic commission designated to review the design of these projects?
I think we want design guidelines.
And someone has to enforce them, right?
Right, well, that would, if there's design guidelines in the zoning overlay district, the building department would be responsible for making sure that the structures conform with those design guidelines.
Yeah. Some, I know some towns have architectural review boards. It certainly wouldn't be the Historic District Commission's job to pass judgment on whether or not.
I don't think it would be planning board, I, I just think, you know, historically, when you talk about planning board, planning board does not deal with the individual residential lots. There's always been ZBA, but ZBA is not gonna do the design review, I can tell you that. So it seems like you have to have design guidelines that are part of the building permit process.
I, I question whether our, our depth of bench here at Manchester, particularly in regard to the building department, has the capability to enforce or, you know, arbitrary, uh, design guidelines.
Well, the, if, if.
I think it might be, I'm, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I think we should do it, but.
If the guidelines are specific enough, that's easy for them because they get the plans.
Perhaps a building inspector could convene an advisory committee to help them do that.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we'd have to wait and see what the design guidelines are.
Okay.
And then ask the building inspectors, is something you can.
My experience with the building department is they're, they're, they're good at what they can do, but there are a lot of things they can't do.
Right, I agree.
That's a very good point, and thinking out what our design guidelines are, we should take into account the fact that we've got a problem in enforcing them, and they either have to be very, very simple and straightforward, or we have to find some new way.
Right.
To enforce.
What's, in general, what's the harm with having planning board review design, like, in other words, extra eyeballs or something?
It's, you're, you're, you're going to have a lot of pushback from residents who can't do anything to their houses because they have to go through so many levels of reviews. You know, if, if, if I were in the district, I owned my house, and I couldn't do anything to it until I had a design review, that's quite different from what it is today.
Yeah.
Um, and I just think it's, I, I can see it on larger projects, no question about it.
Right.
But you're talking a three-family home.
My, my business partner had a house in Old Marblehead, he was trying to put storm windows on the house.
Yeah.
They said you can't put even painted white storm windows, they have to be wood storm windows with the old hinges that hinge down.
Oh, my gosh.
He, you know, he was apoplectic about this, it was, this is absurd, you know, he couldn't figure it out. And so there are, there are absurd limits, you know, that, that these things can be brought to. And so it's, it's a, it's a bit of a prickly, uh.
Yeah, no, I get it, I got my own anecdotes about putting a pool in here versus the prior town, and it was like ten times harder here, trust me.
Right, right.
I'm just saying, like, in general, extra eyeballs, I don't know, I.
Yeah, well.
Well, let's see what the standards look like and then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But the planning board is also fairly busy. And if they have to review every three-family, it's.
They're also not architects.
Right, right.
You're asking people who probably don't have the skill set to oversee something that, I.
I mean, it really would seem like you'd need another board.
Oh, Jesus.
I know.
I know.
I know, but, I mean.
Yeah, I know.
A board of architects.
I just think we're too small a town for that sort of thing.
Yeah.
That's my opinion, you know. How many hoops are we gonna make people jump through?
Right, right.
Okay, here's one that Richard asked before, which I think is a good one. Can we include town or school district land in our zoning areas to get to the placenta minimum? And should we try to do that?
What number?
Uh, this is number twenty.
Oops.
Oh, no. Oh, it's not here.
I don't think you jumped where.
I think that came up because we were trying to connect some properties and so we thought that we could use, and, and I'm pretty sure, we can ask Emily, I'm pretty sure you can.
I think so too.
It just dilutes you.
It adversely impacts the density.
So, it means that you have to, you have to pack the other area a little more densely, so that's that negative, and I'm not sure we have to anymore.
Right.
Right.
It's all congealed.
Oh, we don't have that second page that you've got.
No, yeah.
Second page.
Mine stops at eighteen.
Yeah.
Mine stops at nineteen, mine stops at nineteen.
Yeah, nineteen.
Consolidate some of these, yeah, and send them out.
But we were on fourteen.
No, we went back to fourteen.
Yes, that's where.
We went back to fourteen, right.
Right.
I skipped fourteen.
I'd like to answer fifteen because then I can, I can explain why I'm about to leave.
Right.
Do we do anything to prevent a delay, demolition of significant buildings? We're, we're, our, our chair and the historic commission is pursuing that, that's a big deal. That went down in flames the last time it was introduced at town meeting. So, we're trying to go about it very carefully and make sure it gets vetted and et cetera, et cetera, and it, I think is a separate issue from anything that we're doing here.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
And I don't think you'd want to have any more.
You don't want to go down in flames just because of that.
I, that's true.
The Historic District Commission does not wish to be blamed for.
Well, and I know the planning board has already received one or two letters from people who are already opposed to the concept of demolition.
Well, the, the, the specifics, that, that's why it's, we go about it carefully, the specifics may be, for example, is it over a hundred years, is it over a hundred fifty years, what, what, what is, is there a specific geographic area? So, opposition in general on a hypothetical and, and.
Devil isn't a D.
Undetermined, that's a different thing, also, how long is the demolition? I mean, is it.
And do you have a list of the, I mean, do you have an upfront list of the properties? So somebody knows ahead of time
Right.
whether it might be subject to it, that would make a huge difference.
Huge difference.
Rather than doing it at a point in time they want to destroy it.
I, I, I get prevent, but delay, what, what's the delay?
The idea behind the delay and.
When was this, like, is it six months, is it three years, is it ten years?
We've, we've looked at towns, and, and, by the way, a lot of towns, and a lot of towns, I'm not sure, have demolition delays. They are successful, depending on what the town you talk to, anywhere between twenty and sixty percent of the time in actually preventing the demolition of the building. Because the only thing that the demolition delay does is one, add a little cost to the developer in terms of what they're going after, and two, give the community a chance to come together and maybe propose some solution that saves the building or maybe saves the exterior of the building, or, or does something.
But it, but it also bumps up against ZBA timeframes for decisions made. If the ZBA issues a special permit, it's only good for a limit, or a variance, it's only good for a limited period of time. And you're supposed to apply.
So it solves the whole problem.
Yeah, you're, you're supposed to apply, um, to change a structure before you tear it down.
Yeah.
So that, it just gets complicated. I'm sure you can work through it, but it gets complicated.
Yeah, I'll take my leave because.
So you're leaving?
Thank you, Richard.
I will, I will watch you all.
Oh.
While your reading is going on, right?
No, no.
Okay, well, I think I have an outdated list of questions here, so. Somebody help me, what are we putting missing?
The last one on the, what we have is, should we consider removing existing special permit requirements?
Let me talk to the title, right, we're done with that, and that's the last one.
So, the one I have, another one, how do we evaluate the impact of potential development when current residential parking needs, commercial parking needs and traffic congestion? And I guess that's something a consulting can.
Yeah.
Do for us.
Yeah, I think that was one of the interesting things that Richard was noting in the model.
It probably did seem to make a difference.
It seemed like you could use the current parking requirements or use one per unit, and it didn't seem to impact the density, which is kind of interesting, so the thought is that it's probably because the parking's in the setback, which you're excluding from your buildable area anyway.
Yeah.
But it also doesn't appear as if they are looking at, this, this is one of the things we don't know, is are they actually looking at a certain square footage per unit? You know, certainly with the SLV project, there was a minimum square footage for a one-bedroom, two-bedroom and three-bedroom, and I don't know if that's involved in this at all, but it doesn't seem like, based on the results, that.
Well, they're just saying it's like a thousand square feet per unit?
I'm not sure they're saying anything, but they're saying it's supposed to be good for families, so you'd need a certain amount of square footage for families, so it makes no sense to me.
Yeah.
At this point. That's why we hire consultants.
Right.
That's why we have the control.
Well, plus, they'll come at it from an independent view, you know, which is important to the credibility of the process.
Our consultant's the one that created the.
No, but I mean, for the town, an, an independent view of the town.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, actually, the more I think about her role in it initially, it may benefit us because I think she has credibility with the state, and so there are things that we want her to push for us.
Right.
Um, so.
Yeah.
Might not be such a bad thing.
Yeah.
But I was, I don't know, there was some, I was kind of disappointed in her reaction to something where I think Gail was asked to ask whether our units requirement, our acreage requirement was thirty-seven or thirty-nine. And I didn't, I haven't seen the whole email yet, but the synopsis I got was, she basically said, well, it doesn't really matter, you know.
Well, I think what you're saying.
You're probably gonna be, not, you're probably not gonna be exact anyway.
Yeah, that's what your answer was.
But, I, I mean, I'm sorry, it makes a difference.
It does, it does matter, yeah.
Well, I think the, you know, capacity, it makes a big difference.
Yeah, yeah. So I was a little frustrated, I was, that, you know, but I don't, you know.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see what happens.
It wasn't really in context, so it's kind of hard to know.
Uh, okay, well, that reminds me of another thing, I, I, I said, I look at the MIT presentation again, I recommend you do it too because I've got a lot of stuff I haven't got, I didn't get at the time.
Is that on the website?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, because I asked them for it at the deck.
It's, yeah, we have the deck.
Oh, we did? We didn't get it?
Chris sent it out to everyone, I think.
No.
No, I haven't seen it.
I have the deck, I can send it to.
I haven't seen it, that'd be great.
Okay, that'd be, I mean, I think that would be useful as well.
So their final, in December, their semester ends.
Right.
They'd like to make a final presentation.
Yes.
And so I want to sort of think about how that might happen, are we gonna do it the same way we did? Uh, I want to give them some feedback, if anybody has any questions or comments, we can.
Their, their sound quality was pretty bad.
Yeah, it would be great if they could come here, actually.
Well, we can ask them, right?
Somebody.
Maybe some of them could come.
Yeah, there were three.
The people who were presenting.
Only like four spoke, I think.
Yeah, three, yeah, three.
And one of the gals was impossible to.
At the end, there was, I think there's got to be at least twenty people sitting at that table.
Right. Do we want to make this a big public event?
Yeah, so I'm wondering, do we, are we having a joint meeting? Ron, Master Jack, and I said, why don't we have a joint meeting with the planning board? Maybe it could be a, any of the planning board or the select board for that matter.
So I could go to one meeting in two hats, that'd be good.
You could, yeah.
Increases the density.
You could take that two ways.
Yep.
Uh, I, the only issue about public meetings is, we've made some effort to tell people we didn't hire MIT.
Yeah.
We're not following their instructions in doing what we're doing. They're just giving us input on a class project.
Right, and maybe some ideas.
And, uh, it's not like, you know, we're, we're saying, well, MIT must be right, or something like that. Uh, I think, I think we want to be judicious about playing this up, I mean.
And there were some inaccuracies in what they said.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there were, and I think those we can get corrected, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, my, my feeling would be to let them, I would say, we really think you should come, or send a, a team or something.
Representatives, right.
Um, and let's sit in a room like this, and, and if members of the planning board want to, want to come, they're welcome. And, you know, we put it on the, I guess we, we say that, uh, general public, if you, if you want to come, you, you can come.
Yeah, and I'm playing it up, not playing it up is like not a good idea.
No, I, I wouldn't.
Because we don't know what they're gonna say, we have no idea, and it could be.
Well, now we know, now we know what they're gonna say.
Not really. No, I don't know what the conclusions are gonna be, because we kind of gave them input and it sounded like they were gonna pay attention to us. I don't know.
You know, they don't, we didn't hire them to do something for us, they're, you know, just.
They're fooling around.
Dad flies, if you will, in a negative way, to put it, uh, preternatively, they're, they're not, you know, we didn't go to them and say, help us out with this. Well, it's wonderful that they're willing to give us something, but.
Right.
I don't think we are holding them forth as being, uh huh, here, here's the solution.
I mean, they are potentially a source of some new ideas.
Sure, yeah, which is great.
I mean, the young people who are closer to current planning practice than any of us are.
Right.
But, um, but that's all.
Well, and I did.
Potentially.
I did like how they presented some of the data.
About the demographic data.
Yeah, I thought that was effective and something that could benefit us when, you know, we go into our next phase.
And maybe we invite Emily to come and listen.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, sure, well, she can tune in on Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, we don't ring up a bill for it.
Right. All right, well, I'll talk to Ron about this and see if he'll be happy with us just inviting the planning board members to come.
I think the select board would like to be included too.
Yeah?
Sure, yeah, yeah, you're invited to everything, you know.
She's already on every board.
There are other people on this left board.
She's gonna have a residential unit on the third floor of this building.
If it's a slot for town hall, we can.
We want to preserve the character of the town, remember?
Okay.
All right, so, uh, the, the last item on the agenda was the approval of the goodness, but we don't have them, so.
Yeah, so there we go. Any public comment?
I don't know, who was on?
The only person on is Jane Hardy.
Okay, so I guess it will be a.
Is there any public comment?
I don't think so.
Nope, Jane's not raised.
Okay, I don't have any other mystery matters either, so.
We jerk.
Second.
Go in favor?
Hi.
Hi. When's our next meeting? It's the sixteenth with Emily, okay.
Yeah, sixteen, yes.
Okay. Done.